We'll begin our meeting tonight, as always, with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Bob Hamel in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll note for the record that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Bounds?
Here.
Counselor Lippman?
Present.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Present.
Counselor Hosmer?
Here.
Mayor Angler?
Present.
That wasn't counting. Where did we have?
We have such fun with that.
One tonight.
We just do.
All right. Thank you. We'll note for the record that all six councilors are present for tonight's meeting, and a quorum has been established. Also note for the record that the City Council is joined at the head table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by our City Finance Director Glenn Smith. First order of business tonight is a council proclamation dealing with the American Legion. Due to an unfortunate scheduling conflict, the American Legion at this very hour is celebrating their diamond anniversary year, and it conflicted with the council meeting, obviously, so I could not be there. So the next best thing to do is to allow me, if you will, to read a proclamation celebrating the event. Whereas the American Legion, a brotherhood of American war veterans, was founded in 1919 as an organization dedicated to the service of God and country; and whereas the American Legion, since its establishment, has become one of the bulwarks of the American way of life; and whereas Wilkins Smith Post Number One of the American Legion, whose members have served with honor and courage in the wars of the United States of America in the 20th century, will during the period March 1, 2019 through April 1, 2019, celebrate 100 years of service to the nation by observing the 100th anniversary of its founding, the 100th anniversary of the founding of the distaff organization, the American Legion Auxiliary, and the 100th anniversary of the first national convention as major events in this centennial anniversary year. Now therefore, I, Edward J. Angler, Mayor of the City of Laconia, do hereby proclaim the period March 1, 2019 through April 1, 2019, as the American Legion Diamond Anniversary Year, and do call upon all citizens, businesses, and organizations to join in paying tribute to the good works of the American Legion as a token of the public appreciation of the wartime and peacetime services our legionnaires have given to the community and to the nation. Thank you. Congratulations to legionnaires in general and American Legion Post Number One in particular. I think all of us, my generation anyway, have an attachment to the American Legion through our parents, our fathers primarily, some mothers. My dad was a proud member of the American Legion from the day he left the service in 1945, and I'm sure that's the case of many of the relatives from all the councilors. So on behalf of all of us personally, we'd like to congratulate the American Legion on reaching this milestone and the Wilkins Smith Post Number One in particular. So thank you. Our first order of regular business is acceptance of minutes from previous meeting. You have before you tonight the regular meeting minutes for our last meeting on March 11. Those minutes were distributed by the clerk on March 12, and one correction was submitted to the clerk, and the minutes were redistributed on the same day. So unless there are any other corrections to make at this point in time, I am going to declare the minutes to our March 11, 2019, meeting as approved as amended. Consent and action items. We have one item on the consent and action calendar tonight, and that is a temporary traffic order number three for a community blood drive. This is a repeat of many times on behalf of Penny for Two Travel, and it will cover the date of Friday, April 19, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in the City Hall parking lot. A motion would be in order to approve temporary traffic order number three, community blood drive, to be held on April 19, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Counselor Hamel makes that motion. Counselor Hosmer seconds it. Any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes affirmative, that motion carries, and we thank Penny for Two Travel for their continuing efforts on behalf of the American Red Cross. Citizen comments for matters not on the agenda. Is there anyone with us tonight who wishes to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda? I see a hand go up. Ms. Duffy?
I've noticed that—
Please get the microphone near your—there you go. Thank you.
I've noticed that sub-lawn has been appearing on the agenda quite often.
That what has?
That's 16C2, sub-lawn's.
Oh, good heavens.
No ordinance amending—
That's older than I am.
—chapter 221. Vehicles and traffic parking on sub-lawn's.
Hmm.
I've been curious about that, because we have a lot of that on Whipple Avenue. Okay. I thought they're talking very loud. I'm glad to know you can't hear me. In connection with the short-term rentals, and you're talking about parking on sidewalks, I thought maybe this would be reflected in whatever ordinance you plan to do on the sub-lawn parking.
Okay. I will—see, which committee is that on the agenda for?
That's my committee.
That's your committee?
Committee.
It is.
A counselor, a lot of—
I've tried to find that, by the way, on the website, on the city website, and I can't find it.
The sub-lawn's?
Yeah.
That has been around since—
A lot of weeds have grown up around that proposal.
I think that—
Yeah.
I think that Ava was the former chairman of this committee, and she moved to take it off the agenda, and somebody objected. I don't know what that's about, so—
Counsel Bullock.
I love the—
When we get to committee reports tonight, Counselor, if you would like to make a motion or someone else to remove that from your agenda, we would probably listen—
I like having sub-lawn's. It's very defining. It still has the little country look to it. We're losing them when people keep parking on sidewalks, and eventually it becomes part of the street, so that the cars are parked on the sidewalk thinking—and we have a neighbor, and I'm going to say who it is tonight, Wilkinson Bean. You have four cars on the sidewalk almost every day. People that are going to Wilkinson Bean, old ladies going to funerals, or walking their dogs, or children going to school, I have to go out and walk in the road, and the parking lot is empty. So that's an example of what parking on sub-lawn's and sidewalks can do. Okay?
Okay, Counselar Bounds, the gauntlet has been thrown down to you and your committee here.
Thank you so much, Ms. Duffy.
I don't like to call attention to any particular person.
All right, I saw another hand up. Was it Ms. Pryor? Welcome.
Mayor Angler.
If you could introduce yourself to us, please, for those councilors who don't know you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Pryor. I am currently the Executive Director of the Bellknap Mill. I started in that position in January of this year, and prior to that time, I've been spent about the last two and a half years serving as a nonprofit consultant to the mill, helping them with organizational development and capacity building. I've provided a packet to each of you, which contains a bit of material that I hope you will take a look at at your leisure. You don't need to spend much time on it this evening, but I hope you will take some time to take a look at it. I'd like to also just provide you a very brief update on some of the things that have been going on at the mill. One of the biggest things is we completed a historic building assessment, and that document, a 250-page document, provided the foundation, or the roadmap, if you will, for what we've engaged in in the Industrial Evolution Capital Campaign. That campaign is currently underway. We've taken a very phased approach to the capital campaign to demonstrate our progress and to ensure long-term financial sustainability for the organization. Some of our highlights of our progress over the last three years include a new roof, new energy-efficient boilers, a new sign utilizing repurposed granite posts from our old sign, and a new elevator that is coming to the mill this spring. The board and staff would like to thank Wes and his team at DPW for all the work on the sign and also providing some new drainage, Kevin and the folks at Park and Rec with all their work at Rotary Park, Mayor Ed Angler, and City Count Manager Scott Myers for their leadership and support, which has been wonderful, and the collaboration between the city and the mill has been and continues to be the important in helping to ensure a vibrant and growing community. To date, the mill is proud to say that we've raised over $900,000, a part of our $1.5 million effort. Funding sources include $350,000 from New Hampshire CDFA and tax credits, $202,000 from L-Chip, $100,000 from the Bank of New Hampshire, and several other individuals and businesses in the area. Our mill is only vessel for what really happens inside that special place, which is all the programming that we deliver. Our 2019 programming is robust and welcomes people of all ages. The Bellknap Mill is in its 23rd year of the Industrial Heritage Program. Many of you know that as a day in the life of a mill worker, and every year it's been welcoming, and this year included, will start at next month, 1,500 elementary school-age students. Arts in the Park has grown from nine concerts, from a small number of concerts, to nine concerts this summer that are free and open to the public, thanks to ongoing support from the Putnam Foundation. We've made an addition of the Kids in the Park, which is going to provide programming for the entire month of July, again, free and open to all children in the community. Our artist-in-residence Larry Freitz has joined us for his second year, and this year we're happy to welcome back our historic scavenger hunt, and I challenge all of you, our council people, to form a team and join our scavenger hunt. We've added STEM and STEAM programming in collaboration with SAU 30 that primarily engages middle school students. The STEM and STEAM programming helps with getting kids involved in robotics programming. We're very proud of that. And we've also developed a new relationship with the University of New Hampshire Cooperative Extension. For the last few years, we've hosted the Annual Manufacturing Breakfast. We've also hosted PBS for the Lakes Region Legacy Series and a programming with New Hampshire Public Radio. What we're particularly proud is on April 17, the mill is proud to present Dan Habib from UNH Institute on Disabilities for the screening of his film Intelligent Lives. This film challenges what it means to be intelligent and points to a future in which people of all abilities can fully participate in higher education, meaningful employment, and deep personal relationships. Partners with the mill include Spalding Youth Center, Lakes Region Community Services, the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation, Lakes Region Community College, and many others. We hope that you will consider joining us on the 17th for this important community event, and there is information on that. And we are also hoping that we believe that Senator Maggie Hassan will be joining us for that event as well. We also like to—finally, we'd like to thank Nancy and Cheryl, Shannon, Lindsay, and Rob over at City Hall for all their help to make our programming possible, and to Lisa and Amy at Parks and Rec. I want to thank you for your time. My contact is included in the folder, and I would welcome the opportunity to speak with any of you. Thank you for allowing me to update you on the progress of the Bellknap Mill, and thank you for all your support.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council tonight on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda? Nope? Okay, thank you. We'll move on. We have a public hearing to conduct tonight. Public hearing for Resolution Number Three for 2019 relative to the city's purchase of theater equipment for the Colonial Theater and details of the city's lease with the Bellknap Economic Development Council. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the March 13, 2019 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, at the Public Library, the Community Center, and the SAU office. A copy of the resolution in question is on page 23 of your packet tonight, councilors. So I am going to open this public hearing at 7:16 p.m. and ask if there's anyone with us tonight who wishes to offer comment to the city council with regard to the Colonial Theater Resolution Number Three. I hear the birds chirping. Okay. All right, with no input from the public, we'll note that and close the hearing at 7:17 p.m. Now, in a bit of unusual business, councilors, if you can bear with me on this, inadvertently, we were supposed to have a second public hearing tonight, which was noticed publicly, but was inadvertently left off the city council agenda for tonight, and so therefore it has been advised legally we are—we need to push this back to our next meeting legally. But there could be somebody with us here tonight who came specifically to that purpose because the meeting was proper, the hearing was properly noticed in the usual way. And so what I'm going to do tonight with your consent, councilors, is to open this public hearing and ask if there's anyone tonight who wishes to offer comment. I doubt that there is, but it's possible, and then I will continue that hearing until our next meeting, and we will reopen the hearing at our next meeting and deal with the subject matter at our next meeting. Is that okay with all of you? All right, thank you. Somewhere here tonight, I have the—this has to do with the introduction of ordinance 2019-119-13-02, amending chapter 119 of the Building Construction Ordinance, Article Two, Adoption of Standard Subparagraph 119-13. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the March 13, 2019 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, at the Public Library, at the Community Center, and the SAU. Membership to the Building Code Board of Appeals has very specific requirements, and this has caused difficulty in recruiting volunteers to serve on the board. This amendment, proposed amendment, will retain the provision that at least three of the members of the board will meet the specified requirements but will allow of two other members without any specific professional skill set. This would enable the city to fulfill longstanding—fill longstanding vacancies on the board. Okay, so I'm going to declare this public hearing open at 7—what does that say? 18? 19, I guess, 7:19 p.m., and ask if there's anyone in attendance at tonight's meeting who would like to comment on the possible adoption of this ordinance having to do with the Building Code Board of Appeals. Anyone? All right, so let the record show that no one came forward tonight, and with the council's indulgence, I'm going to recess this hearing and ask that the clerk post it for opening the hearing back up for further comment at our next meeting. Okay? All right, thank you for bearing with me on that. There are no presentations tonight. We're on to Mayor's Report. I have a couple of things tonight. Number one is, at our last meeting, I named the members for 2019 of the city's—or the mayor's commissioner or committee on human relations, and inadvertently one name was read off, was omitted from that list inadvertently that I read last week. So I want for the record to know the council and the public to know that I'm also appointing Margaret Donnelly of Laconia to serve on that committee, Margaret Donnelly. Second thing I'd like to comment on tonight is potholes. We all know it's that time of year, and all of us, most of us good-naturedly, have the indulgence of commenting on various potholes throughout the city or roads that are need and repair, which rear their head every year at this point in time. That's nothing new. And as I said, most everyone takes that for what it is. We all know, we live in New Hampshire. This is not Southern California or wherever, and that we're going to have difficulty with our roads, as every place in the country does, in the northern tier of states stretching all the way from Maine to the Cascade Mountains and Washington. If you have a combination of snow and temperatures that reach the freezing point at any point during the year, you're going to have issues with roads that other parts of the country do not have, and I think we all know and appreciate that. And I was reading a letter earlier today that was authored by Bob Harrington. I think most of us know Bob and his longtime commitments to the city in all kinds of different areas. And Bob's letter to the public was basically saying, you know, "Let's all take a deep breath here and realize where we live and what the circumstances are, and try to be in as good a—use common sense and try to be in as good humor—as good a humor as possible with regard to the subject at hand here." As he says in this letter that I read today, "Something we have lived with in the past and will have to grin and bear it in years to come. Road crews do the best they can, but it is a never-ending battle, so give them a break and your thanks." And I would second that emotion or that sentiment on the part of Bob Harrington, as far as our own Public Works Department is concerned. The reason that I wanted to mention this tonight, though, is that, as I said, most of the comments that are made and that you read online in this day and age, having to do with the conditions of the roads this time of year, are relatively good-natured. And we all understand where we live and the times we live in. Some, however, and it seems like a growing number every year, of the comments are not so good-humored, and people use the occasion of a pothole showing up on their street or a street that they typically traverse in their daily lives as being an excuse to vent their distaste for—trying to think of the appropriate language here—for their hometown. And I think that that is unfortunate and uncalled-for, and that we can have a civic discussion about this or any other subject having to do with public expenditure or public policy without resorting to attacks on the very city that we live in and descriptions, over-the-top descriptions about what a horrible place this is to live and whatnot because of the condition of certain roads at this time of the year. And I don't find that constructive, and I would encourage those people to—you know, there's nothing we can do about people from another town commenting on our roads, as there's nothing to do to prevent them, us, from commenting on their roads. But certainly, my personal experience is that there's nothing significantly different about our roads at any given time than any other community that I'm aware of that shares the same climate we do, including our immediate neighbors. I forget the number now off the top of my head, but I was reading an article in the Concord Monitor last week about how many complaints they've had for potholes in the city of Concord, which is about twice our size, but I think they were bragging about the fact that it was down to something like 6,000 or 8,000 this year, complaints, which was half what it was last year, where they literally had almost 20,000 complaints about potholes and whatnot. So I don't think what we're experiencing in Laconia at this point in time is, to my experience, any different than any other municipality, as I said, in the same circumstances. But it shouldn't be used as a reason for our own residents to attack the city for whatever agenda reason they might have. And not to say that the budget and policy that this council or any other council has put forward over the years is sacrosanct and is above criticism, but I'm simply saying that there are more constructive ways of trying to affect policy, if that's your goal. And we have elections every two years, and if you want to make a campaign on your own or on someone else's behalf to double or triple or quadruple or whatever the amount of money we're spending on roads and make a suggestion about where the money's going to come from to do that, you're more than welcome to do that, and that is the appropriate forum, I think, in terms of suggesting policy changes, not attacks on social media, et cetera. So I thank you for listening to my little rant here about potholes, but I thought that was something that needed to be said, so it is what it is. And again, I thank Bob Harrington for bringing this to my attention. Committee reports. I know we had a meeting earlier this evening of the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee, and I will ask for a report on that meeting from the Chairman of the Committee, Counselor Bounds.
We did have a meeting. It took a full hour. I was under the impression that there were more people here who wanted to be heard on this particular issue. I asked the committee that we recommend to the council that we continue down this path, exploring the ordinance as it relates to short-term housing. There's a lot of work to be done. I don't know what the council's schedules are, but because I felt that we hadn't reserved enough time for folks to be heard, I'd like to schedule this again for the next meeting, if everybody's going to be available, Counselor Hosmer, Counselor Cheney, so that we can get some more input. Perhaps we can define a little bit what our goals are, so we can start to refine how we're going to get there. But the committee recommended that we give the Planning Department authorization to proceed down the course of trying to fashion some kind of ordinance to address the short-term housing issue.
Counselor Hamel, you had a committee meeting in waiting, did you not?
No.
No?
I'll discuss that after.
Oh, okay. All right. So you have no immediate need for a committee meeting. Does anybody else representing another committee have immediate need? All right, so—
Well, I guess I've got a second issue, and that is, we've got the as-is roads that's been referred to committee, and I guess I'll ask Wes—
You have the what? I'm sorry.
The as-is roads, the acceptance—the process for accepting roads as-is. I guess I'll ask Wes what kind of a timeframe you're looking for for that, because I can try to squeeze it in the next time we get here or put it off. So I'm born to serve you on this one. What's your timeframe?
We have an item in the budget that includes money for accepting the as-is roads, so it'd be good if we could come to a recommendation prior to getting far along in the budget process. So I would recommend no later than last meeting in April or first meeting in May.
So we're talking about the Public Works Committee at this point?
Yeah.
Not the ordinances committee?
Not the ordinance committee. That's Counselor Haynes and—who else is on that committee?
Counselor Hosmer.
Yeah, Counselor Hosmer.
All right, so—
I'm willing to do it. My thought is, we can get both in at the next meeting, but I may be wrong, and I want to reserve time for—
Optimistic.
I'm always an optimist. Always an optimist. But I'll take—if we'll do it in the second week of April, the second meeting of April, I mean?
Mm-hmm.
What date is that?
22.
April 22. How much time do you need, Wes?
We'll have a better feel for that after our meeting on Friday, sir.
Okay. So why don't we schedule it for 6:00 for the second meeting in April, and when we have that discussion, maybe at the next meeting, the first meeting in April, we can reschedule it to 6:30?
Okay.
Not that I don't love to be here, but—
Okay. Counselor Bounds makes a motion to schedule a meeting of the Public Works Committee for April 22 at 6:00 p.m. to discuss on their agenda item three, which is proposed criteria to accept roads, quote, "as-is," end quote. Is there a second to that motion? Counselor Hamel seconds it. Any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes affirmative, that meeting is scheduled. Also, Counselor Bounds makes a motion to schedule a meeting of the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee for Monday, April 8 at 6:00 p.m. in this chamber, for the purpose, again, of taking up item number four—no, I'm sorry, number five, regulation of short-term residential rental businesses.
That's right.
Correct?
That's correct.
Is there a second to that motion, please? Counselor Cheney, seconds motion, any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes affirmative, and that motion carries. All right, thank you. Any other committee business to come before the council tonight? Counselor Hamel?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As I stated at the last meeting of the City Council— As I stated in my, at the last meeting of the City Council, I arranged to have a meeting with D.P.W. Director Wes Anderson on the parking, I mean, the D.P.W. compound. And we had a meeting there at D.P.W. to discuss the overall project of a new building. And maybe if Wes could come up to the podium. We talked about...
You had a meeting?
Yes, Wes and I.
You, okay, the two of you did.
Yeah, we did. And it was just basically to do some general discussion, to see where we're going, what kind of building D.P.W. would be looking for, the size, the accommodations of the trucks and all those kinds of things. So we kinda left it as Wes would try and get a, what was the word?
We're gonna get a proposal for a space management study.
Space management study. In other words, Wes stated, you know, what they would be looking for in a modern building to house their vehicles, you know, pole barn offices and all that kinda thing. And whether or not what this engineering would do, I guess, would specify as if that particular building, the way they're looking to do it, would fit on that property. So we have a choice of building there or finding another location. We discussed that if we, that whole place, I guess, is built on a peak bog. So the discussion would be is if we do the shoring underneath a new building and remove some of the peat compared to paying the expense for a new piece of land somewhere, which would probably be a lot less accessible to the city. It'd be on the fringes instead of in the middle. So we kinda made general discussions about that, and Wes is gonna go ahead and, and...
I've already requested a couple proposals, so...
Okay. So I guess where we're at is we're gonna wait until we see the proposals come back
Correct.
for the, for the building and whether it'll fit on that lot. And I guess we need to decide as a council at that point of, do we make the building fit there? I mean, you could go up two stories to make it fit in that area and just, you know, a lot of things that we can discuss. But basically, right now, we're just looking at a tentative proposal of what they're looking for, if it would fit in a space like in the parking lot to the right of the building that's there now.
Is there a cost associated with this?
There will be, yeah, but I won't know what until I see the proposal back from the, the firm.
Got a ballpark?
I'd say ten to twenty thousand, rough estimate.
Right now, you're looking for vendors to, to do a study.
Well, for this piece, we're gonna go back to the same consultants that we had for the stabilization because they know the, the area the best. And all they're really focusing on this part is the actual space management, determining what a size of the facility should look like. It's just basically what box it's in. And that would end it there. We wouldn't do anything for design or anything. It just gives us what, what footprint that we're looking for.
The...
So what, is any action by the council required at this point in time?
I wouldn't think so.
We'd be looking to find existing funds to do that, but just, obviously, it's a consensus that this is a preliminary step for us to be taking to help narrow down the choices of how we proceed with the Public Works garage.
So what exactly are we authorizing you to do at this point in time?
I think it's just more for informational purposes, that this is a direction, if the council supports it, we would be moving in.
Anyone have any objection to this direction? Councilor Lippman?
I don't have an objection. I'd have a request that the members of the committee see the RFP before it goes out.
Okay.
Okay. You know, I think it's been, I've been through the building a cou- a couple times and the one that's there. And the other option would be to fix, try and fix or repair the building. And I believe that would kinda be like what we did with the, the new middle school. The building that's there now is in such disrepair where the underneath of the, soil underneath is actually, well, almost a foot below the cement floor of, of the building. The building's sinking so that the wires are being pulled out of the electrical panels. And the roof is in disrepair. It's not, the, the doors are not adequate enough to allow the salt trucks to be stored inside, which you should do for the next day to keep them dry. So there's a lot of things that are not... Go ahead.
You wanna go beyond the initial report that we got that gave us various estimates for, you know, it would cost so much, we'd be out of the, we'd be out of the facility for so many weeks or so many months. You wanna go beyond that and get that more solidified because...
Exactly. Before we bring it to the, the land and buildings as a committee...
I'll just give you my thought now, and I'm not suggesting this is not appropriate to do, but it seems to me that the site we're on now is gonna eventually be inappropriate. And that's just my thought. I'm not an expert. I'm just using the information that I've got. The building's sinking, the roof is falling down, the sky is falling. So that's just my thought. And I, but I'm not opposed to doing this, to really finding out. I don't think that distance from this, the city makes much of a difference because I think, you know, the city's small enough, we can get anywhere in the city pretty quickly, no matter where we're located. So that's just my thoughts.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Well, you know, well, like I said, when, once we get this information, we'll bring it back, back to the committee or council at whole, as a whole, and, and discuss the options.
Councilor Haynes?
David, I agree with you. I think when that was Manta's property, they had the same problem. So I think we're just throwing good money at bet. But I'm open to, you know, proposals and look and see what's...
It's not, it's not a lot of money, number one, maybe feasible, number two, and so...
Councilor Lippman?
So I understand what's going on with the, the building and been in it, witnessed some of it myself. I guess my question is, in terms of, do we have a site survey that defines where the bog begins and ends?
We don't have an exact survey. We do know where the, the salt and sand shed is. They did bores to put those in. And the peat moss or the peat layer was in that area about the same thickness, same depth as where it is where they took it around the building. So I would anticipate most of that area is probably an old swamp with peat, with a layer of peat underneath. And that's what I'm getting anecdotal from the, from the people who've lived here for a long time because they remember hunting for frogs down in the swamp.
Go ahead.
Just in terms of interested how far it goes out because you've got Irwin's, which is our neighbor, and their, their buildings, from, to my, my knowledge, haven't had that experience. So I'm just wondering how far out the bog goes.
And we're building in between, too. Where the Enterprise is.
Yeah, like consider that Irwin has part of that building as well.
You know, and I think another thing to look at is, I mean, that building is not a young building. You know, that building must go back to the fifties or earlier, you know? The old manors, the building that was there. But who knows what underpinning was actually done properly to hold the building back then? The experience we had with the new middle school, look how much material we had to pull out of there because the old school was sinking. So we, we took a lot of material out of that area there and refilled it, so. And it just, it, it's a beginning look at, at what we have there, so.
I guess in terms of evaluating the property, I'd like to know how, kinda where the boundaries are of the concern area. Is it the entire parcel or is it, you know, thirty percent of it or ninety percent of it? And then is there an economic value to the, to the peat moss that is, can be gauged?
That'd be very hard to determine because your economic value may be nullified by how deep it is. You've gotta get down to about the ten-foot mark before you can even start pulling the peat out of it. So you're gonna have, be moving a lot of soil to get to it. You're probably, if you're gonna build on that site, more than likely drive piles through the, the peat moss into stable soil underneath and then build on top of piles.
Not disputing that construction, I'm just curious in terms of, you know, when we did the high school field project, we moved a lot of dirt in that project and, you know, a lot more than probably what would have to be moved in this situation. So I guess to the extent that there, our engineers know someone from a field survey standpoint, they could give us some sense of whether there's value to consider with respect to that, it'd be something I'd be interested in knowing as well.
Okay, anything else on this subject? Any other committee business tonight? Councilor Bowles, I have one question. Only mentioned this tonight because I was preparing for this meeting and looking at the agenda. It occurred to me that item number four under your Government Operations and Ordinances Committee was put there by Moses, I think. And I don't even know what it's about, do you?
You, do you mean the ordinance amending Chapter One vehicles and traffic parking on sublons?
No, no, no. I'm talking, I'm talking even older than that. Second reading of a resolution relative to the adoption of RSA 3195B.
Here, here's my honest response.
Okay.
I have no clue.
I can help there if...
So that is dealing with accepting grants and donations outside of the budget process. And that is something I have been working with the city attorney with, and then it kinda fell off the radar a little bit, and I just resurrected it about a month or so ago. Because if it is something that the council is going to entertain, it might be encompassing a charter change, which would mean we would not need to start the process to get the language...
Is this about the whole thing about accepting donations?
This is about accepting donations of less than ten thousand dollars outside of the budget process. And there's times where we might get a donation for five hundred dollars. And we're required to post a public hearing and pay for the advertising somewhere and then have a first reading and a second reading. And it really should be an administrative task. So 3195 is enabling legislation for towns that the, outside of the budget process, up to whatever dollar amount that the governing body determines, funds can be accepted for the purpose as long as they're reported out at a meeting. So if the council said, we, if the voters said, in our case, if we had to go to a charter, we wanna be able to do it up to ten thousand dollars, basically, once a month or quarterly or as they occurred, we would report out on the council agenda that the city has accepted these grant donations. Some grants are recurring every year. The school receives a lot of grants. The police department has recurring grants for different D.E.W. patrols and distracted driving. Grants we know about, we include in the budget process so that we don't have to go through this whole public hearing. These are for the small, unknown ones that may occur from time to time. And for a city our size and a budget our size, ten thousand or less probably should be administratively...
All right, Councilor Bowles, I'm gonna request that you give this some thought and take decisive action in the not-too-distant future.
Well, timing-wise, it is a good...
And I'm gonna ask you for a memo by the end of tomorrow and just exactly what decisive is.
It is something I do intend to bring to you, probably by May, because if it is approved, then the language...
So it'll go straight to the committee?
To the committee. We have to have a public hearing. The language needs to approve, be approved. The A.G.'s office needs to review the language so that it can go on to a municipal ballot.
How many, how many grants are we talking about over the course of a year?
There might be twelve or fifteen, but for every single one, we need to advertise it. I've got, I've got one I'm seeking clarification on right now to accept seventy-five bicycle helmets for a bike rodeo.
Well, it looks like the city manager's right on top of this. So I'll check in with him and we'll be decisive together about this, all right?
Liaison reports. Anyone have a liaison report tonight? Councilor Cheney?
I might. I, I had a meeting recently with the police chief with regards to the resource officer that we approved earlier this year. Councilor Haynes and I attended a ceremony, if, if you will, of the first day or two of the new resource officer being assigned to the middle school. So that function has been started and an officer has been trained and assigned. The other conversation I had with the chief was with regards to the council having approved a position to walk the main street, as I understood it.
We voted to fund, two years ago, we voted to fund a
Right.
patrol officer for the downtown area.
So I spoke with the chief about that matter, and he pointed out the fact that they've been down five or six positions, and it's been difficult. I suggested to him, and he heartily accepted the idea, that assigning someone for an hour here and an hour there would be a good start. And so very soon, I think you'll see officers assigned to walk in the downtown area for one or two-hour slots, hopefully, most days of the week.
Right.
So, and, and the chief was very cognizant of the fact that they had, had been remiss in not doing something sooner and assured me he would, would work on it very quickly. So, and I wanna thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that report. Any other liaison reports?
Yes, I just wanted to report to the council that, having been to the most recent Water Commission meeting, there's a lot going on in the city that Seth Nuttlemann, I know, will be making plans to come here, I think, within the next month or so, to get us up to speed with some major projects that are going on in the city. But they are planning certainly for some major work to be done right here at the top of Main Street and Union Avenue, coming up, I believe, in the month of June. So there's going to be a number of moving parts in a fairly significant operation that's gonna go on there. Interesting enough, what I found out about it is some of this piping has, was never replaced when Union Avenue and South Main Street were replaced some years ago, maybe upwards of thirty years ago. Because I, from what I understand, at the time, they didn't wanna get into that intersection because of the complexity of it and the disruption of traffic. So it's been put off for decades now and...
Didn't we just tear up that intersection for the Holy Grail?
No, I think he's talking about the...
Right up here. South Main Street.
Down here.
Yes.
I was talking about up there, I'm sorry, okay.
So where there's, we'll be, we'll be briefed in the coming weeks as to the extent of this and be able to go, get everyone up to speed as to what to anticipate. It will be a little bit disruptive for traffic and pedestrians and some of the businesses around there. But I know they have an eye on keeping the downtime when they do have to shut water down or sewer down, it's gonna be for a minimum amount, a minimal amount of time.
Do you know how long this is gonna take?
I'll leave that up to Seth to determine that, that's...
Okay.
I think, I think some of the shutdowns of, of some of the pipes there will be eight hours at a time. So it'll be a significant portion of time. But that's just part of, that's a very small part of the project, really. Shut, turning off the water, turning off some of the sort of...
I wasn't talking about that, I was just talking about the project itself. I'll, I'll, I'll wait on that. I'll wait for your decisiveness, so to speak.
What does that word mean?
It's our new...
I'm getting a memo on it.
It's our new word, yeah. He's gonna get a memo on what decisiveness means.
All right. Moving on. Citizens request to comment on current agenda items. Is there anyone with us tonight who wishes to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? No? All right, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have two reports in your packet tonight. Before I get to them, a couple of items that were touched upon that I'll tie in that aren't included in the reports. First one, talk about budget presentations coming, including the, the water budget, which was approved by the commissioners a few weeks ago. I now have that, and that'll be included in the budget that I present. Still planning on presenting the city budget on April eighth. Probably be about a twenty-minute overview of the key points of what's driving it. And budget books will be ready for you to take home as parting gifts that evening. So we can be looking forward to that. The other item on potholes, the city did go out to bid for our paving contract this year, as we do every couple of years. Typically, we have a three-year contract, and there are some options that are able to be exercised by the city and the contractor if both parties agree to. So we were at the end of our cycle. We went out, we had five or six parties came, five came who were, ended up being qualified to bid. We had two respondents who actually came in with bids at the end of the process, some because everyone is looking to go out to work at this time of year and some other, you know, business came their way and might have filled up their dance cards, so to speak. So we had two bids. Busby Construction was the low bid, and we did award the contract to Busby to continue working in the city. It's based on where we are with unit pricing and knowing the contractor. We will now be looking to, I won't, I won't use the word finalize, but put together our, our paving list in addition to the big construction projects that are going on for the coming season. Some of the projects, timing-wise, might happen earlier in the year. It could be because... It could be because there is fewer utilities that are involved in, in the work. So it may just be a shim or an overlay. Other more involved projects could include not only water and sewer, but might include some of the other utilities that we find underground, including, you know, electrical, gas, communications cables, and where we have to work with other outside entities as well. Timing wise, we are also coming to the end of the fiscal year. So dollar wise, some of the funds are available now for projects up until June 30th, and remainder of funds would be approved for July 1st. So all of that goes into the mix as we look at the timing of projects when they occur. We try to avoid doing, you know, some work at peak weekends and be in the middle of major intersections on major holiday type of weekends. So a lot goes into it, including, again, our own water, sewer, drainage, and public works and the outside utilities. So we will have a framework of a list to you probably in about the next week or 10 days and try to put some times with them as when we expect to be working on those roads. Couple of the bigger projects, Court Street, we actually have Liberty Gas in the road down at the bridge that is being on the replacement schedule. We're still waiting for final confirmation from the state, I believe, as to when they're slotting that project. And last I knew, it was for spring of 2020. So Liberty Gas is in there doing some upgrades to their work in advance of that bridge replacement for basically next year at this time. We will be back in, meaning Busby will be back in the road starting next week on Court Street, probably in the area of Fair Street, to begin the roughly five weeks' worth of in-road work that they have remaining. And then we'll be doing some of the tie-ins in the sidewalks, tie-ins to the connector roads, the side streets and stuff. Will take a few more weeks after that. But we're hopeful that once Busby's in the road itself, it'll be about a five-week period before they wrap up the roadwork and again, start with the other one. We, you do have in your, in your report that we do have an information session for the public on the Court Street project and the phasing as to what it's looking like during the construction season. That'll be April 3rd at 6 o'clock, right across the parking lot in the Belnet Mill. We are in the road in Lakeport beginning tomorrow on the Union Ave from Lakeport Square up to Stark Street. So look for crews there. You've seen some painting on Messer Street in advance of doing the drainage upgrades that, some of it was completed last fall with the drawdown of the lake. We'll be back in there probably in early April to continue that drainage work. So you'll see some paint marks, or you will, they're out there now, paint marks and stuff for that project are there in anticipation. Other items to bring up for this evening, the Riverwalk sections will be wrapping up the final punch list items down behind the spa towards Church Street where the bridge was installed last year. So that is ready to roll hopefully in the next week or so. We'll be finishing up the segment of the Riverwalk behind the landmark just as soon as the landmark project is kind of out of the way. They've been doing a great job there, and we've just put that segment on hold until they're out of our way, so to speak, so we can finish up that segment. Again, we continue to encourage folks to bring their flattened corrugated cardboard to the fenced-in cage behind the public works facility. It's a cost-effective way for us to recycle cardboard, separate from the single stream, and at a much less dollar per ton cost for doing it. So if folks can help us out and in essence, help out, help out the city and, and help out their tax dollars, to stretch those to go further. The irrigation projects will be lined up to go in this spring as soon as the ground allows on, on Memorial Park Ball Field. And we will be scheduling the meeting on the Pearly Pond, again, probably in another few weeks, once we get beyond mud season here, and people can traipse through there and talk about that a little bit.
Counselor Littman? When you're done, I have two, a couple of things I'd like to ask.
Okay. I'm going to go to the economic development report, then finish up with one more thing that was in the, the project update. So the economic development report, we still continue to be at full employment. New Hampshire has the lowest unemployment rate in the country as reported for, for the month of February. So we, we are at full capacity, the numbers are very strong. We're anticipating that businesses, seasonal businesses in the region are probably going to have challenges again, finding employees again for the summer, much the same way they did last year. So we'll look at that. Inflation has tamed a little bit for the first couple of months of this year. We're running it around 1.5, 1.6% for the first two months. Just a reminder, we ended up with 2.5% for the calendar year 2018. The final item I wanted to bring up tonight deals with the Indian statue over in Opech Park. That's something we've been talking about for a number of months now. We have tried to stabilize it. It is stabilized at the moment, but some testing had been done on it. I know several years ago, Counselor Hamel and then Counsel Boldeck went over and did some testing. We did some testing more recently in the last year or so. There are significant challenges with the condition of the wood on that statue. The Parks Commission, at a request of one of the residents back in January, had extended 60 days for someone to form a citizen committee and come up with ideas on how it could be addressed, as far as, could it be salvaged? My recommendation and staff recommendation is that we're at the point right now that we need to take that statue down. There was a window of opportunity, Reliable Crane, I think the gentleman's name is, is it Dennis Wright, had been great about working with the commission and trying to offer some opportunities. While I was out of the office last week, through communication, I was asked if I could grant a sole source to try to allow them to get in there as conditions were still on the edge of being favorable. I granted that. By the time they were able to mobilize and take a look at it late last week, between the rain and the changing conditions, there was concern about the ground, the mud, stabilizing the equipment, and more importantly, dealing with heavy equipment going over the track. We certainly don't want to be damaging that track. So at this point, staff recommendation is, and I'm looking for consensus on, and I spoke with Mitch Hamel, the chair of the, of the Parks Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission this afternoon, to, you know, assure that I had a right reading on where the commission stands. Thought it would be to dismantle that as opposed to trying to bring a crane in for upwards of $7,000 to $10,000. No guarantee that the statue would come out intact. And all that would do is be able to move it down and lay it on the ground in place somewhere in the park. And we still would have to determine what and how to do with it and what condition it was in, it would be in afterwards. So our recommendation is that we look to dismantle that when conditions allow, partly because it is an ongoing safety issue. We think longer term, there's no immediate danger. But we also know with the ground shifting coming out of the, over the freeze thaw cycles now, more activity with kids in the track, and, and those events happening coming into springtime, that it would make sense. I want to be clear, when we talk about dismantling, the intent would not to be to have it try to come down in one salvageable piece. We probably would look to take it down in sections where appropriate, possibly. And again, I'm just talking generally, maybe trying to take part of the back off of it so that the face port of it could be salvaged. But I'm not making any guarantees about dismantling it, that it would be salvageable in its current condition for reuse anywhere. Could be partial reuse, could be open to opportunities of what to do with it. But I wanted to share that with you tonight and, and get comments and, and hopefully consensus to move forward with that.
All right, any counsel want to weigh in on the, Counselor Hamel?
Yes, well, Armin and I took care of that for, for a long, long time, you know, going, spraying stain on it and varnish on the face and things. You know, we noticed over the, the decades that it was deteriorating. The base of it's pretty well gone. You know, it saddens me to, to say, but I, I agree with Scott that something has to be done with it. And the condition of it is, is pretty bad. We tried to get the, the gentleman, can't think of his name now.
The last name was Toth, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, Mr. Toth. To come up and see what he could do. He has been doing some repairs on some that he's built around the country by putting a steel girder, remember, on the inside of it. But that cost is anywhere from $6,000 to $10,000 to do that, because that's what we found out. And then Kevin recontacted some of these cities that he's been to in the past, and they ended up taking it down anyway, because it just rotted. So at some point, a tree becomes.
Sodust.
Sodust, and that's where that one's heading. I, I've been working up in the Maple Orchard, and we just lost a tree up there that's probably 300 or 400 years old that came down in that last windstorm. So it has a lifespan. And I think we've been fortunate that it's been there for this long. And, you know, if sections of it can be saved, that would be great. But I know if we tried to pull that off of those pins that, that go up there, three to five feet, it, it's just going to pull the top of it off and the rest is going to stay there. So I think that what Scott emphasized is probably the best way to do it is take it down in sections and see what we can save and decide what to do with it after that.
And I, I would remind the council that, if memory serves, we made a decision last fall to do this very thing. And the, the statue got to stay, if you will. When a private party came to the Parks and Rec Commission and asked for a couple of months to try to put together a fundraising campaign or something or other to do this or that, and my understanding is that that never happened. And so the Parks and Rec Commission now is recommending that we go ahead and proceed on the course of action that we had outlined last fall.
Three words.
Counselor Downs?
Take it down.
Anyone object? I think you have a consensus.
I appreciate that, thank you. If you have a good line report, I'm happy to take any questions.
Counselor Littman? So going back to roads, I understand we have potholes and things that have come because of the season. I did take some messages on Eastman Shore Road and the, which is not a paved road, but a, a dirt road. In terms of, are we doing anything about, particular about the mud situation on that road that, I know Wes, you probably have firsthand knowledge of it, having lived out there.
Wes, can you give us an update on what we've done as far as trying to stabilize that since that communication came in?
We've actually been working on all the dirt roads since basically the Monday after that communication. That, that was raining that day and everything else on the melt, basically put a position where we couldn't do anything. We've got, hauled in a lot of stone into the soft spots and stiffened it up. It's still slick. They're still frosting the ground, so it's, the water that's on it is not seeping through as fast. But it is passable for cars at this point. North side is more, Eastman Shore Road north is more slick. It's a lot longer stretch, a lot more snow on it, a lot more water on top of it, but it is passable. The other roads, for the most part, it was just places where we needed to just dump some gravel and to stiffen up one or two spots on each road. And for the most part, they are passable. And we're going to watch it to see how the weather goes and how it, how it's drying out and just keep working it.
Jill Nein had a story about some other communities having somewhat similar issues. But I, I guess I would like to, just for the public's benefit in terms of the, the road budget, we've probably more than doubled our normal budget in road construction, repair over the next, over last year. And this year, we're running about $1 million in cash to $1 million and a half, and now we're looking at $2.5 million per year. And I guess the, the interest rates are at a pretty good point where I'm wondering when we're going to consider to finish off the financing to, to continue with that upgraded investment.
So we've got the two, 2.5 million dollar bonds already approved and issued, and the proposed next bond is going to be for 1.3 million, which would be used to be paid for out of that $5 vehicle registration surcharge, which the funds go into the separate account. So we've always talked about doing two, 2.5 million dollar bonds and then a $1 million bond. So the combined 5 million is issued. I really can't go forward and issue the 1.3 until we have approval through the budget process. So this proposed, we've made some projections on the interest rates. The interest rates actually have backed off a little bit over the last 30 or 45 days. But legally, I, we would, if we were going to issue it through a, a bank or through a bond council or through the bond bank, they would be looking for the supporting documentation that the city council has authorized those bonds. And at this point, I don't have that.
Insofar as, there might be some other options for working through and around that? Take that offline in terms of.
Happy to have discussions and, and talk to anyone and everyone on that.
Counselor Haines?
Wes, those gravel roads, are they city-accepted roads?
Eastman Shore Road South, from where it intersects with Eastman, to about three-quarters of the way through the Miller property is accepted. From the Miller property going past my house to the end is, is unacceptable. It's never been, city's never done anything to it. Eastman Shore Road North is an unaccepted street that was declared an emergency lane. Hayes is an unaccepted street. Colonial Plantation is unaccepted. New Hope is unaccepted. Hilliard is accepted, but only a portion of it at the very far end is gravel. And, oh, I got a brain cramp. There's one other, Severance has a section at the very far end that's gravel, about.
So do we have, do we have any idea how Eastman Shore South got accepted as a gravel road?
Actually, we do. And in my research for it, because I, I live on that street, we were trying to figure out that piece. The residents on Eastman Shore Road South used the betterment process, and don't quote me an exact number of those, it was either 25,000, 25 or 30,000 they put in to have it brought up to a higher level standard on, as a gravel road. That's why the ditches and everything are much better on Eastman Shore Road South than it is on north. And as part of that process, the city accepted that street.
We accepted on the grounds that it was a better gravel road than it used to be?
The city accepted it at that point.
All right, has, has the city ever made a commitment to pave that road, do you know?
Not that I have found, sir.
Counselor Littman?
So just changing subjects from roads, so I guess it does though relate to DPW in a direct sense. As we head into the budget process, we've talked about over recent meetings about recycling being a loss leader at the moment. We've done some things in terms of corrugated cardboard. I guess as one of the budget options, I'd ask that we look at a, a different option than we have in place for having a recycling option. But I think curbside pickup is becoming economically unfeasible and taking away from other things to be done in the city. Not saying that what I'm suggesting ought to be the way it is, but we at least ought to consider it and understand what the, what the savings might be with some different model that would still allow people, if they wanted to recycle, to recycle, but not necessarily have curbside pickup, given the economics of it today.
We can put together some options and review them with you to make sure we're on the same path of thinking that you're looking at.
Counselor Hamel?
A couple of things. I noticed especially up on Union Avenue from Guilford Ave towards Irving Station, there still are several, I call them dead poles, poles that are still there that been, the new poles have been replaced, especially in front of Autozone, the one that's on pillars, I guess you could say, kind of hanging out into the road. And some of these have one wire on them. Couple of them have a couple more, but this has been like three years that that's been there, going on a third year anyway. So I, I think we need to look into, see if we can get the other companies that carry wire on there, whether it's phone, cable, or even our own fire wire, you know, to, to look at that, see if we can get those out of there. And, and I'm sure there's a ton more around the city, because they've been replacing a lot of poles everywhere. And I've, and just driving around, I see a lot of them that are just blank, but they're still in the ground.
And that's been a, a struggle of ours, and I know Wes and I have spoken, and some of it is getting the next utility to schedule the time to get it off the, off the old pole, because there was a pecking order in which they have to come off. But you are right, some of it's been our fire alarm wire, and that's something that we don't typically budget for within our budget. But all down Court Street this past construction season, with a large replacement of the, the poles because of the more reliability of the network that EverSource was installing, we needed to move all our fire alarm wire. And that's something that, you know, turned in, we ended up subcontracting it just because we didn't have the man-hours available to do it and make, do some maintenance on some brakes. So one of the things that I've actually spoken with Chief Biati about and may come into play this year, although we need to talk a little bit about how much notice we need to give to some of the businesses who we require to be on our fire system, is, is there a better way to do it in this day and age with technology? And the answer is yes. It's just a matter of how do we wean off of the, our, our wire and get them to go to digital or telephone or some other method that is out there right now? And what's the appropriate timeframe for that? We do charge an alarm box fee for the businesses. We do charge an alarm box fee for the businesses who are hooked up for our monitoring and doing that, but I think it's really probably passe at this point, and we ought to be looking at different technologies. So that's something that he is reviewing some options for, and we will continue to work through the process and bring suggestions to the council.
Okay. Maybe in the areas that, it's been like three years, especially in front of the high school, maybe we could make a phone call and say like, you know.
We will continue to put a push on it, yeah.
Okay. The other thing I, I would like to bring up is what we did last year where we're doing major, major road construction is also to hire a person again this year as an observer to the work being done. You know, I think even though you pay someone to do that in the long run, I believe it'll get, give us a, I don't want to say a better quality job, but a job that we know is done right, because once you put a pipe in and you bury it, you don't have no clue.
Wes, can you?
It's already planned. We've already talked with the two engineering firms that's done the design. We know who's going to be doing the inspection for us, and they'll be kicking off shortly in the inspection, once we start going in the road to do drainage work.
Okay, great. And I, I also think, you know, we need to have someone, when they pave the roads, be there when they're paving, to be sure we're getting the asphalt down that is supposed to be there, not less, not more.
Correct.
You know, that's important. State does it all the time. There's people from the state that walk right along those paving machines and make sure. And going, you know, with what Henry was saying about monies that we're putting into roads, because I've heard some comments about, you know, why are we spending money on this project, that project, when our roads need to be done? And in the last two years, this, this council, along with the city manager, increasing the budget for new roads, we're up to $9 million within two, two and a half years that we've set aside for roads. I don't know too many communities in the area here that have done that. And I think this council has realized, you know, the roads, what the conditions were, are in now, and we, I think we've done well to set aside that kind of money, whether in loans or regular budget items. So we know there's a problem and I, I think the council is addressing it. Thank you.
We were on city manager's report, right?
I was taking questions.
You were taking questions. Are there any more questions or comments for the manager? Counsel Chini?
I, I have a comment. My most recent message with regards to the roads was at 7:27 this evening, a text message. I, I spoke to Wes earlier tonight and in fact left him a message last week about Union Avenue up by.
VIP.
VIP. There's a hole there that requires a barrel for warning purposes. Wes's comment is, and I'm, I'm sure he's right, that water is our enemy and every time you try to fill it, the water washes it out. But it is the main thoroughfare in this city, and it seems to me we ought to be able to find something.
And guess what? It's 20 feet past where the new road is going to go, right?
And I, it's funny, I knew.
We're ending at Stark Street and the pot hole you're talking about is just past Stark Street.
It, it just, as I briefly expressed to, to Wes, I hope he can find some way to get the water out of that, get some coal patch or whatever it is they're putting in down, and hopefully find some way to channel the water away. But for, for people on our main thoroughfare to have to go into the turn lane to, to drive up Union Avenue, I think is difficult to justify. Dirt roads, I can, I can accept the answers that, that we've gotten, but I think Union Avenue deserves a little more consideration. That was my only point.
I don't, I don't want to disagree with it, but I want to echo, I want to echo your comments from earlier. This is New Hampshire. This is March and April. This is what happens. We do our best to try to deal with the potholes, the mud season and all of that. So we should keep, we, it's not that we shouldn't keep raising the issue or trying to address it, but we should also remember that folks at DPW and all across the city work really hard to keep our roads roadworthy.
I'm, I'm not questioning the competency or the commitment of the Department of Public Works. I'm questioning, can we find some way to deal with that problem beyond what we've tried up to this point? That was my only point.
Okay.
I think the, I think the problem right in that area is drainage. You know, the, the water has nowhere to go, so it sits there, freezes at night and blows some more tar up. The new stretch they're doing from Lakeport Square to Stock Street, I believe they're adding a, a lot of new drainage to alleviate the problem coming off the hills up there.
I think one of the problems we face here, excuse me, Counselor, is that the public, if you will, or a good part of the public, and perhaps this is our fault as a council, I don't know, but doesn't have a good grasp of how much money it costs to keep repairing, if you will, what in effect is a perishable. And, and as an example of that, and I'm reminded of this every day, you know, the, the project, the big project that we've have going on right now, which is the rebuild of Court Street and the section of Union Avenue from, from Lakeport Square up to Stark Street, that's $5 million bucks right there, just for that, $5 million. And how long is it going to last? I mean, it's not like it's going to last 50 years or anything remotely close to that. And that's just a, in my mind, just an example of the, of the obstacle that not only we face, but every municipality faces, is we're putting millions of dollars into what's in effect a perishable. It has a very short shelf life, given the amount of money we're putting into it.
Yeah, but I think the, I think the, the public has this perception that once you build a road, and if you build it, quote, right, it's going to last forever, and that's not the case.
Well, it's not the case, yeah. It may last longer.
You can make it last longer if you build it right. You know, you, the subsurface is done correctly.
Counselor, I think Wes would agree that. One of the things that is paramount is the drainage.
If you keep the water out of the pavement, that's.
Exactly.
Adds to the life of the surface.
So just to jump in one more time, but we are doing complete streets. We, the number, the amount of material that we're pulling out of Court Street to put the appropriate base underneath it is significant in order to extend the life and along with the drainage. And Counselor Hamel hit the, the nail on the head. The amount of new drainage going in on just that section of Union Ave from Fratello's up to Stark Street to again extend the life and the retaining wall that a lot of that water is now rushing over along that area is significant. Beyond that point, beyond where the Water Department is, when we get to the next section from VIP down to the Daily Sun and Friendly's in that area, there's a real concern from the Water Department on how we're handling our drainage at that point, because now we are above the water intake for the city's water source. So there are a lot of moving parts there, but controlling the water and the drainage and building it properly to begin with and building the roads with a proper pitch and not just going over and putting asphalt on substandard material is going to pay dividends in the long run, while there's some short-term pain like the mayor alluded to, $5 million for a couple of street segments. One thing I will point out is it does include sidewalks. There are three lanes because of the turning lane on those streets versus just two travel lanes, so it's not your average, you know, 22 or 24 foot wide street. There are other components to it. But we are trying to build the roads to, so when we go back to repair them, it's just an overlay, we're not back in doing a rebuild again.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we have no new business tonight. We do have one item of unfinished business, and that is a second reading and approval of resolution number three relative to the city's purchase of theater equipment for the Colonial Theater and details of the city's lease with the Bellknap Economic Development Council. This is on page 22 of your packet tonight, the actual resolution. We talked about it our last meeting, is on page 23. Anyone need to weigh in here before we get to motions? Okay, a vote, first motion to be in order tonight would be to waive reading of resolution number three in its entirety and to read by title only. Counselor Haynes makes that motion. Counselor Hamel seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of waiving the reading, please raise a hand. We have six votes in affirmative that motion carries. Next up, a motion being ordered for the second, to approve the second reading of resolution number three relative to the city's purchase of theater equipment for the Colonial Theater and details of the city's lease with Bellknap Economic Development Council. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Bowden seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the resolution on second reading, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries again unanimously. And finally, I need a motion to approve resolution number three relative to the city's, to the city's purchase of theater equipment for the Colonial Theater and details of the city's lease with the Bellknap Economic Development Council. Counselor Haynes makes that motion. Counselor Bowden seconds it. Any discussion? Okay, final vote. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. And I thank you, Counselor, again, on behalf of Counselor Hamel, I thank the council for its support of the ongoing effort to renovate the Colonial Theater. Council comments? Any council comments tonight? Counselor Haynes?
Just, just to mention that the, the premier team of the New England Wolves won their league championship, the Eastern Hockey League Championship. They, they put Laconia on the map.
Oh, great.
And at their annual banquet, they, there was a lot of hardware. Coach Trumbull is the coach of the year.
Oh, wow, great.
So I congratulate them.
Maybe we could invite them to the council meeting for a recognition.
Is this the same team we had the last time?
Yeah.
I'll leave that up to you as to what you think is appropriate.
Counselor, the only problem is the kids have gone.
Oh, are they? Okay.
But we could invite the coaching staff.
Happy to do that. Any other council comments tonight? Counselor Chaney?
No.
No? I'm disappointed.
I'm not.
Counselor Lemon, did you have something? No? All right. Being no further business, come before the council tonight, I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned at 8:23 PM. Thank you.